Let me board this selection. The order Tuesday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, seven P M. This is a hybrid meeting, public can attend in person or electronically. If you have something to say, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and we will call on you during the audience of citizen. If it is not in the agenda, if there's something in the agenda, I would wait till audience and citizen after to make a statement, unless you're a public on the subject matter expert. If you are, no, we're okay, we all have our video live because we're right here, excellent. So next order of business, please join with me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the government, which is friends, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move to approve the agenda with the addition to new business, seven point five municipal financial advisory services contract agreement. Why are we hearing that, Mark?
We got that today? Yeah, we got that today, if we bond the services are actually on with them, roll out the bond, sell it to them.
Alright, so within the body of the agenda, we're going to be looking at the H VAC system to vote on and see if we're going to move it forward. So the financial advisory services will need to be in place. Any, any discussion? We did get this late today. All those in favor, aye, opposed? Thank you. I made the motion to, I moved to approve the regular board selection, regular meeting minutes for October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. You ever get a report on the electro fishing?
No, I haven't.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approval events, aye, aye, both agree. Audience of citizen? Yes?
Yes, John, I have a question about the town meeting. Will, will, is it Southern Petroselli? Will they be presenting off Colonel? With their plans are at the town meeting?
So, so for the audience and everybody else, since we usually don't answer questions, when Silver, when we have the town meeting, they will be there to be able to answer questions.
But they will not do a whole presentation, you can watch the whole presentation online from the tri board meeting. It's recorded.
I looked for it.
Check it out.
It's on the YouTube video.
Okay.
And it's awesome, then the presentations are also on the, on the website. If you click in the calendar under the meeting, you can click and see the actual PowerPoint presentations.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to follow along.
Say your name, please.
Oh, Millie Ramsey, I'm going to follow Anne's thinking. Is there a way that you're going to publicize people so that they can know if they want to hear this presentation, that they can go to YouTube, we put on that pervert?
No, it wouldn't be an emergency, but we are going to send out an explanatory text mailer explaining the whole project.
Oh.
As a result of tonight, if we move forward, then that's my next point of order with Silver Petroselli to finish that explanatory text. And we'll mail it and announce that both the town meeting that would, if approved tonight, would roll over to a referendum.
So would you consider in that mailing, letting people know about YouTube, Jim?
Sure, I, I agree. Reference it, sure.
Nobody online, your hand up. Thank you. Old business.
And we do have Ken Eldridge online who's representing Silver Petroselli.
Unless you're going to talk about the lake, but we'll get to that later. Lake Management Advisory Commission proposal updates of the town, do we have any more?
Well, you have everything for your reading and analysis.
Okay.
Which then will bring up our way again in a week. Right, to get your feedback.
It's in front of us now, any, any comments additional? Because I know a comment was, a statement was made. So if you, if you look through this and you have comments or have a statement or have a question, somebody else may be thinking the same thing. So it's here now, we can look at it, we can add it to what we need to read and consider. So please don't be shy, if you've looked at this and you have a comment. Yes.
So Article two, watercraft on Columbia Lake ordinance, page three, which I think we're on section one ninety dash six, prohibiting certain use of Columbia Lake.
Yeah.
If you look at sub paragraph H, it starts section one ninety dash five E, one ninety dash five F. My question is, should that be one ninety dash six, E, or one ninety dash six F? Because, well, at least my copy, I don't have one ninety dash five E and one ninety dash five F.
One ninety dash five A, B, A, B, and C, E, down at the bottom of the first page, that's the second page. So one ninety dash five, that's one ninety dash six, yeah, okay.
And the second part of that is that second line, it's blank, useful line up to one year. I guess it has to be recommended a timeframe.
Well, that's where we come in, so you understand what you're saying.
Five E, right here.
Yeah, but it comes after six, one, one, one nine zero dash six.
Oh, okay, so that five should be a six. Yeah, and then we'll check that, okay, I, I get it now. Alright.
I have a question, and, okay, they're talking about this an outboard engine of up to eighty horsepower in the inboard hundred fifty, and then they're saying we're asking the people to go no more than six miles an hour, isn't that a big?
Tell me where you're at, six miles an hour.
Um, one ninety twelve C.
That's in nighttime, right?
Is that just nighttime?
After the dust there, one ninety.
Attention. It's a motorized watercraft launched or operated on the, if we only have one engine, we'd accept another trolling engine capable of a speed of no more than six miles an hour. Now, that just seems like a lot of horsepower for asking people to.
That's scared speed.
Am I, am I reading that wrong?
It, it trolling more, that's so that fishers can fish.
Okay, so that's not that we're asking people to go only six miles an hour.
Or in certain.
At night.
At night, just at night, and when you're leaving, you're done.
So that's what that's saying, if I may, what it's saying, you can only have one motor on your motor craft. Now fishermen have two, which is one to propel the boat to get at twenty knots or whatever, and the second area is a small trolling motor that they can control the movement of the boat when they're fishing. So the ordinance, the suggestion says you should only have one engine, except if you have a fishing boat with a trolling motor, which cannot exceed six miles an hour.
So how are we going to vote if it's capable of doing that, what it's rated for?
Yeah.
The three horsepower.
I, I'm just asking, what's the super duper battery, I think, and I'm just curious how we can amend it out of this? Or if it's by spec, is that how we?
First of all, they want to go this quietly and slowly, they're, they're trying to fool the little fish.
They're trying to get the fish. So how fast do we ask people to go on the lake then?
We don't, I don't, I don't know.
There's nothing here. It's horsepower, not speed.
We don't have speed guns, right.
A concern about the grandfather clause here. On, on section H, on that last page that you forgot, please, it's on page three there. Can you see that?
Which, oh, one oh nine, one nine zero dash five E.
Five E.
H.
Oh, it's not clear, it's H, it's subsection. So how many boats do we have presently on the way that exceed twenty-six feet?
I think, run. Yes, they, not positively. I know, for sure.
Is that a houseboat?
How, how much bigger is that boat?
Thirty-six feet.
It's thirty-six feet, so it's a big, bigger boat. So I was looking online with the size of these, yeah, plant pontoons, and they, they rate, they can be, they really are smaller than twenty-six feet, they're up to, it looks like twenty-four, twenty-five feet for the pontoons.
So if you currently have a thirty-six foot houseboat that is currently in compliance with the town ordinance, as of November second, twenty twenty-three, is it grandfathered in under this ordinance? Because if it comes down to push, comes to shut, it's going to be an issue, it's going to be litigated.
Okay, there's.
And it might be thirty-two.
That's right, but there's two issues here. One of them is the length of the boat and the distance that it is, it protrudes from the end of their legal dock out into the water. Could be a safety issue, although nobody's supposed to come within a hundred feet. That's one thing, that's, that's what was brought to my attention. But the other thing was, we talked to the attorney about grandfather, and the town attorney said there's no such thing as grandfather in this instance, is that correct?
In a ordinance.
This is a grandfather clause right here.
I know, so they have to add.
So we can't have it both ways.
What's a grandfather?
Basically, you're saying that if you're.
No, no, which, which clause is it?
It's H.
It's H.
One.
What's a nine?
It's her pages on this.
One ninety-five, yeah, got it. H.
Right, but that's not grandfathering the lake, just E and F. So I think, is that what you were trying to film?
No, there's no modification is made to such watercraft that increases in any fashion, it's nonconformity. But if it's already like that, they cannot increase it. This, this boat doesn't have a modification. It's already thirty-two or thirty-six feet. So was owned prior to November second, twenty-three, remains owned, same residence, qualified non, or qualified temporary. No modification is made to such watercraft that increases it in any fashion. In any fashion, it's nonconformity. This boat already is a thirty-two, it isn't increased outside of the guidelines, it's already thirty-two, so it's, it would be, as I read this, it would be, you're right, grandfathered in.
How, how would it go?
Because it, it is, is existing.
It's, it's currently in compliance, technically.
There was no, there was nothing that.
There's no length.
It, there was no noncompliance before November second.
Right, but I still think it's in conflict with G, because you don't have G in the grandfather labor.
That's new.
That, what was it before?
Oh, okay, because it's new, you can't tell the grandfather.
Like, they need to have a length of a.
If I, right now, my reading of this is that if I have a twenty-seven foot craft that's currently on the lake, I'm good for next year, even though you changed your ordinance to be a twenty-six because I'm grandfathered in by that next thing. Okay, so if somebody's got a thirty-six foot houseboat on the lake right now, it's my opinion that, that it's grandfathered in or that originally it's, it's in compliance with the statute.
So we've got to somehow change it so we're not.
Well, we're going to send it back, L Mac. And they're going to.
Right, I was, I made the assumption that L Mac would be here to answer these questions. But I don't know whether or not he'll be here, so give me all your questions, and we'll put this on next week's agenda. And I'll get answers together.
Has it not a frame that fit this all?
Yes, it's a good question, sure.
Yes, Henry's been working on it with the town attorney.
Okay, so the town attorney has seen this, and I remember last two weeks ago, the timeline was L Mac, a, a, a pre-work by the attorneys, the town attorney. L Mac would look at any changes that the attorney made, and they would bring it before the board of selection, which is tonight, that's why we thought L Mac would be here. And then we would make our changes or vote on what they had, we didn't have any problems. And then it would go to the town attorney for final review and back to us for votes. For, that was, we get through, the fact that we now still have questions, we're going to put it back at least a couple of weeks.
Great, I have some questions about the penalties. The penalties appear in three sections, they appear in though, one ninety dash seven, one ninety dash sixteen, and one ninety dash twenty-two. And basically, it's the same language, any violations deemed to be reckless or unsafe, or if, or if ongoing violations continue in such a fashion that continued violations are reckless and unsafe, the board of selection, acting in conjunction with the Tennessee State Police, police reserves are ready to prohibit the violator and/or the violating watercraft from being used on Columbia Lake for a distant period of time, not to exceed one year. My question is, how does it, how exactly does the, the board of selection act in conjunction with the state police on this? Is this something that would be, be more in the realm of the lake patrol handling this? Rather than putting the enforcement action on us? I mean, are we going to hold a special meeting and say, okay, now we see a violation, we have to hit the state police as well?
Well, when there's a, as I understand, in violation out there, we have no law enforcement capabilities, all we're supposed to do is the water patrols to call the state police or issue warnings.
Or issue warnings. Eventually, the warnings will become visited by the state police.
So if, with this, is it against the law, is this something that state police can enforce because it's against the law? Or is it just, I guess that's what I'm reading all this.
They'd be enforcing our ordinance.
So that's something that they can go in and say, find or arrest them?
Well, they have their own book of laws too. It's a litany of things that would be covered also by our ordinances, but they might use their own statute.
But you're putting forth the standard here says reckless or unsafe. Who determines the standard, you know, who determines whether someone is, is a nation reckless or unsafe?
That's it, we're reading.
Right, right, but shouldn't there be some due process?
Even what is reckless, and reckless is a pretty high standard, I mean, you know, especially on a boat.
Well, driving with your lights on at night.
There may be some specifics, somewhat a definition of reckless and unsafe, you know, what that means. Because you're right, I was questioning that.
Okay, so.
A more definition of what that.
Reckless and unsafe is a consoling.
Defined.
Defined.
Yeah, defined.
And how, how is this determined, fine and how?
I'm just not sure whether the board of selection should be involved, unfortunately, I think it should be between the lake patrol and the state police.
Right, I agree.
Don't worry, you're going to be like that.
Well, deep down, like a piece of something. I get it, I think, I think if the, if the state troops or the state police are followed, and they see something going out there, write the ticket, why does that have to come to us?
Right, I mean, we're the boss of the police, of the, of the lake monitors or whatever you call them. But they're the ones, we give them the authority to, to make that decision.
I'm still seeing the absence of due process here.
So what do you think we should, how, how do you think we should do it differently?
I'm not sure, it, it just sounds like.
You got a point.
Right, let's assume that it's not a cut and dry, right? Police, state police doesn't detect something and they can, you know, arrest him and do something through state statute or, or the penal code or like that. It just seems like, again, I guess we'll see what the reckless or unsafe definition, but still, it kind of puts us in a situation where now, you know, or the arbiters, and whether this person is prohibited from, you know, putting a craft on a lake for up to a year, and then what is this person's due process rights beyond us if we're the final arbiter? I'm just thinking a lot of just simple constitutional process.
Or do, if they have a problem with the thing that comes up with the board of selection?
So maybe there should be steps, I mean, you give them a warning, you, and then.
Arbitral one, one, two.
And we do have some people who are trained to know how to do this stuff, I assume.
This is a pretty involved proposal here.
Yeah.
Some of the ordinance you're seeing other towns, I was checking out a few other ones, and it's not that involved anywhere else. So this is pretty, pretty intense.
So I guess it's, it's, how can we enforce it?
Well, because I'm sitting here, what if somebody has a personal date with them?
Yeah, I understand, that's what I'm, this happens.
It happens.
But on the other hand, if somebody's out there, the patrol's out there, and they have it on video on their phone, and they show it to us where the boat cuts off somebody on a wakeboard, does import or paddleboard, or splashes them doing figure eights, you know, figure eights allow, and things like that.
It kind of goes to what Chris is saying as far as the, the due process issue is because the fact that if you have an ordinance, people have to know what the behavior is that's been wrong here, and so if you start saying reckless, you know, it's not going to be defined.
I guess we just have to have steps of what, you know, what will happen if A happens, and what's going to happen next? Then people get warnings before they.
Be a challenger.
You're what?
Challenger.
Go ahead, Be. Okay, oh, you know, I'd like to say in voting, you get your license, you go through the courts, meet down, you know what reckless is. You do?
You do, you're bad.
But I understand, due process.
Well, it makes sense, you know, you have to some steps, I guess.
But the issue is if somebody's upset, and they're denying them the right, then they're going to sort of, you're going to have litigation over your ordinance, and so you got to kind of assume the worst, and I'm not, I'm not assuming everybody's going to hold the rules as it's forced.
Well, I understand, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, I got a question.
We'll never, ever be able to get it really cut and dry, run. We just can't, it's subjective before it's, I, they were doing this, they were doing that, I told them, I called them over, lights and stuff, said, please stop, don't do that, you're not supposed to do that. Okay, screw you, I'm on my way, boom, I'm still doing, wow, I wasn't doing exactly what they were doing, it's a tough situation.
It's a tough.
Anyway, we all just.
I mean, it also says that you don't want to have drones on the lake. I mean, are we going to prohibit drones all over town if you do it on the lake? I just, that seems like not necessary, hard to enforce. That's what I think people were complaining that it was, and maybe their privacy.
And, and honestly, on that drones, I mean, there's not just drones, there's other R C aircraft, they wanted to consider that, that you could put floating devices in, fly, you know, land, it's kind of like a playing with cartoons, I think, say.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, did they?
Yes.
Yes.
I just don't, I don't know how you can enforce that, and I'm not sure that's, I guess I'd want more explanation on that.
Send it back, L Mac, if you have any other things, please go through this again.
Thank you.
New business, okay, the meaning of the, meaning of the evening. I, I, I don't want to go into five-hour discussion about the H VAC. But I would like to open it up, talk about it a little bit, questions, what I feel, because they're looking for us to put together the town meeting. There's two, two things here, one, the cost we mark, I'm sure Bev had handed it, looked through this, and found where it came up to six million, one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Now, if we don't get a grant, that's six million, one seventy-five to the town. But we could put forward, put forth a resolution saying six point one seven five zero dollars, and that would only go forward through a yes vote, and the anticipation and, and award of the grant at three million, three hundred ninety-six thousand, two fifty. So on one, both these, we put it with the town, have a town meeting. One says we go forward no matter what, another one says we go forward if we get the grant at about forty-six, forty-seven percent. Lisa.
Wasn't it eight, nine?
No.
It's, it's come down.
So I said, Mark and Bev all looked at this, they looked at the numbers, some things didn't add up, we were able to decrease a few things, and is it in here, Mark?
Yes.
Came down to.
We're going to find the breakout, the best.
Six million, one six million, one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars.
That includes binding. Issuing bond.
Could we add something if we don't get the grant, that then we proceed with doing the down, the A wing?
No, no. Well, wait, both it's a yes. Okay, you guys talk about that a little bit, it's six million dollars for the whole school.
Right.
It's three million for the A wing.
Right.
And.
I think it was last night.
But that three million includes a quarter of the legislature, they do the whole.
Right, yeah. Can you, the representatives from Silver? They, they looked over the new bid. Yes, and they're okay with that, they understand it, and they're going to, they're on agreement, yes, we're constant work, Ken shaking his head, and you're looking at Jim. My thought was to say, I can't hear your head shaking, sorry, that's in your hip. So we're okay with that, sir? You mute it, Ken.
Yes.
Call your name, never mind. Actually, would you please state your name?
Ken Eldridge, Silver Petroselli.
Excellent. What's the, what's the A wing cost, and you said it was a new?
I think the A wing alone was three million dollars.
The A wing is three million.
Is that through the continuing things?
Yeah. These numbers also include the four twenty-eight that we've already set aside.
That we're trying to get back in the grant.
We're putting it in the grant. So that's included in this number, even though we already allocated it, so that's in there. But, yeah, Mark added the ninety-seven thousand bonds, so yeah, so if you take out the engineering fees alone, it's going to be maybe like five point six million, when you add in the engineering fees and the.
Now, the engineering fees are on a. Are they?
Separate or.
Why can't you take them up, don't you have to have engineers put this together for it?
So in case that when they're in construction, something comes up during a project, you already have money allocated to, through a change order, take care of these surprises that may come along in a construction.
Isn't that an entire, so there's no surprising?
Sure, there's always surprises.
There's always surprises.
But there's always contingency when.
Some type of material cost go up on some time.
I don't think, that I understand, that I understand. Material costs, costs go up. You know, surprises like can't hold the weight of the machinery, you know.
I was hoping that's the right.
Um, on this sheet I'm looking at, at the bottom, it said total project cost is six million seventy. Thousand two hundred fifteen and the town's contribution at fifty two point one four percent is two million, then it should be over three. So I think we're looking at the state's contribution, not the town's contribution.
No, that was clarified, I think. The town's contribution is essentially gonna be about a little under forty nine percent.
So Lisa, I, I have the same question today. So after that long form, the next, the next. Is department administrative services, grants administration, uh, administration? And if you look down, well, you have line number thirty and you go all the way to the right. This could be year twenty twenty four, general construction. This is not new, it's general construction. We are looking at the grant of fifty two thousand, excuse me, fifty two point one four percent. Correct? And the rest would be ours, correct?
Yep.
Alright, so that's why we got the number. Yes.
Yeah, it's fifty percent of what the state. Says we're eligible for reimbursement for.
So this is the town's contribution. Fifty two is the reimbursement rate that you don't see here.
Gotcha.
Alright, it's. Alright, so, so. We were all there. I kind of just want to have thoughts on. When we take a vote without saying anything or like to make a motion or.
Would you want to spend our two different motions? One, you know.
One is we say the whole thing in hopes that, you know, if, if we, if we decide to do this, get the money upfront, bond the money. Get the money upfront. If we get the part portion of the grant, this go around great. If not, and we have bonded the money, we go forward with the project and hope to reapply to be reimbursed. No guarantee anywhere in there. And it's, the second resolution is to. Bond for one sixty one seventy five and only start, only do it if we get. The state, the grant portion to us.
We actually wouldn't bond, we would. If we don't get the grant. Was, the project will stop.
Right, but it does say.
Provided that in no event shall less than two million seven hundred seventy eight thousand appropriation approved hereby be financed with a grant might. Received by the state. So they're saying we need grant money to keep this one to go.
Yeah, okay.
So we're not putting anything in there about the A wing except for it not out.
That's a whole other.
So that would have to be another, I'm just thinking.
You start over. If, if we did get the grant and this, this resolution said you're done, we would then. Decide what's our next step and we'd have to do another referendum, because it's over five hundred thousand dollars.
So you can't fill this in. I'm just thinking, trying to eliminate a town, the town meeting referendum.
Yes, I, um. I struggled with this as far as, and I found that the tri board meeting was helpful to me. Um, I, um. I'm not real happy to include the number on it. It's a lot of money and it concerns me, but, um. I thought about the situation that we have as far as our high schools is, we don't have a high school infrastructure to worry about. Where you're gonna be having these kind of problems that pop up, where, where you gotta deal with each, I mean, anytime you get a failure, you're gonna have to have issues. Um, so maybe it's a lot to me that we don't work, we have one building that we have to, and I do support the proposal. One thing that made a lot to me was Ernie's comment about the fact that it, um. He didn't think that it was affected on the military. If I'm quoting him incorrectly, that was my belief is what he, he said after he analyzed the numbers. Ernie was on call, if you want to ask him a question.
It would be like a three quarter increase in that way, something like that.
How much?
I think it said the three.
Three quarter?
Yeah, they, you know, whatever.
Examples are here and they're better than what I've, my rough map, but again, it was at seven point seven million dollars.
Let me finish what I was saying. The last point I had to make is the fact that. We have a lot of smart people on the HVAC community that we, we picked and they, they spent a lot of time studying and, and based upon their recommendation. I think that we should go with the, with the recommendation for the entire thing. So I'm gonna support it. That's my opinion on it.
I said, I mean, I support it. So do we have to decide if we? Hey, the, the different resolutions, do we have to decide if we get the, you know, we don't get the money, it's, we're not gonna do it or?
We're gonna have to pick one of these.
Yeah.
So my position is this, this all started with mold. That's been over a year and still really has not been addressed and moisture. And it's still not addressed. And there's nothing in all this that I'm seeing that really being addressed. Aside from changing air, but moisture is still gonna be, if it's infiltrating on it and stuff. So being who I am. I went to the EPA's website and I said, what's cleaner, indoor air or outdoor air? And this is, I, I, I didn't go to anybody else at the EPA. And this is air cleaners and air filters in homes. The most effective ways to improve your indoor air. Are to reduce or remove the sources of pollutants and to ventilate with clean outdoor air. Not filtered air, but outdoor air. And I, and I know there's people with pollen allergies. I have them. Fresh air and sunshine kill, that is what kills viruses. That most of the filters are not good on the small, small viruses otherwise hospitals would not have had COVID issues. We have debt coming out of our ears. The federal government is thirty three million dollars in counting and going up every day. And soon it's gonna be more. The debt for Connecticut is. Fifty four, oh god, billion, two hundred and twelve. So it's fifteen thousand dollars per citizen are dead in Connecticut right now. That's every citizen, every baby, every old person, the fifty percent of the people who don't pay taxes. Or earn a paycheck with fifteen thousand dollars of debt. And we're gonna bond with them. And granted, we'll pay for it, because Columbia is good and we pay for it. But the grant is, is going to act to that thing. And I just. That system in A wing is old. But I was there on the board and the rest of it was revamped in, when they did the roof and stuff. All sorts of new stuff was done, it was cleaned up, it was, there was lots of work done when the roof was done. And it's. I just don't see it. I can, I will not put my name on it, I'll abstain, but I, I'm not. And this is, I feel like it was a false flack and we used mold to get an air conditioning unit that they wanted in. Since I was on the board at, back in early two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, that they wanted it then. It was a conversation then, and this was used, you know, don't let a crisis go to waste. And that's, it just runs through my head. So I will not vote for it. I won't vote against it, but my name's not on it.
So I'll lean more towards the second solution, which kind of has the condition. That we get the grant. Um, I mean, I, I agree with you, Lisa, I mean, as a nation, as a state, we certainly. Have a lot of debt and this isn't the best of times for the most people. But I do understand that, you know, there are going to be needs for the school to comply with these new. Underfunded, unfunded mandates and to try to take advantage of. The grant to at least get, get at the cover. And that's where I would land to support this.
So. We don't put in for this and we don't get the grant, good for us. You know, we did our. The right thing, not to make them charge us money, tax us money to be able to give the taxes. Back to us to do something. That's not an argument, because if, if we don't do it.
So that, to me, that's not an argument.
I, I understand. It's not an argument. It's a fact.
Said, but everybody says it and nobody stops.
But that's right.
And that's why we're thirty.
I'm not really the Tom Maguire or Jerry Maguire, okay? With, with, other towns will go, God bless you, did a great job, hundred sixty eight of them. We're getting a piece of Columbia's. So I, that, I won't be factored that in. But I'm, and I'm also not gonna bet against the desires and the leadership in this state. When they say, we're gonna mandate this on every town. It's gonna happen and there's no more grant money. I'm not gambling on every, you know, that they wouldn't do that to us. But. I will tell you that I like the second one. It helps me where. We're asking the state to put skin in the game. And really, if they mandate this and they give some towns money. And others are denied. That gives us in my, you know, maybe it gives us a fighting shot or a battle. So. I said it first meeting. You wanna bring in fresh air, fresh air is fresh air. You know, it's full of this, it's full of that, it's full of this. I say, well, my God, you know, shut down outside of recess, I can send kids out there and know it all that. And it was like.
You'd have to put the vault indoors and you're not getting open door. I mean, there's all sorts of things, there's errors there.
I did want to ask a question, and I know we have a gentleman here who's been in HVAC. And so I'm gonna, and. If we just did. If we just did the, um, not the DOAS system for the. But we just took care of the. Air conditioning because with those splits, it helps control the moisture. I did ask that and they said, yes, it does help control the moisture. If we just did the splits. That doesn't.
Yeah, we, um, Ken Eldridge. We haven't seen that as being the case. There's an issue with high occupancy. Uh, spaces such as this. There's also an internal humidity generation, uh, people themselves give off. Uh, moisture and transmit it into the space. So the split systems really don't handle that. Um, all that well. They're not meant to take anything but what we call the sensible load, which is the heat from power. Uh, the dry heat from body heat and lighting and, um, anything that offsets. Loads from the envelope, windows, et cetera. Um, the real. Moisture brunt of the work of moisture removal is done at the DOAS. And it is done that way because, um, it only happens when we're, uh, bringing a large amount of air into the building. Uh, it treats that for humidity filtration. And there are other ways that you can, you can do that, but, um. Otherwise, you really not doing your, that's the brunt of the work that has to be done is when you're in occupied mode. And you have, uh, that air coming in from the outside. Um, so I don't see it, uh, the DOAS is a very specialized piece of equipment, dedicated outdoor air system. Um, and it's designed specifically to treat outdoor air. Um. The coils get cooler. Um, there, there's a reheat capability which, uh, adjusts the relative humidity. And there's also a heating component. Filtration isn't as, um. Prevalent on those types of units, uh, other than bringing, bringing out, uh, large debris. Um, it's, uh, not that we're trying to strain viruses at the DOAS unit. It's just controlling the air that could potentially lead to mold and, uh, other. Indoor air quality issues.
So now we're down to picking which. Resolution we put before the town.
I think the second.
The second one is not dependent on the grant? It is dependent.
There was an issue that we addressed, you know, when we first started this process, that we wanted to have a contingent upon getting the grant.
And that's what led to this. Still can't. And that's consistent with that prior referendum we had. It's why the numbers are, it's based on that original forty five percent, at least forty five percent. That's why the numbers are. Not exactly aligned with the state. We're just putting a cushion so we don't get disqualified because of state changes and. Slight percentage here and there for some reason.
So. Second resolution, all those in favor putting it forward. I don't know if this reads correctly. Read this through your head a couple of times and see if it reads correctly.
They don't have any other motions. Oh, I'm the only one who has it, yeah. You have the whole resolution, this is the notion.
Alright. Resolution authorizing appropriation of six million dollars for the installation replacement. And or the upgrading the HVAC system, indoor quality air system at Forest Quarter School and the financing of said appropriation. By the issuance of general obligation bonds. That's us, right?
Yeah.
And notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed three point three nine six. And notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed. So is that the bond that we hope to get not to exceed three million?
We won't pay more than three point three nine six, no. The state will pay for the primary, right, at two point seven. So that's the most we could.
That's going back to them doing forty eight percent.
After the motion, or at least forty five.
The, um, Mike Patello or.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why, if we're gonna be going with the second option here, why can't we just, you know, go forward to the town. Presenting the second option rather than getting into, um. A motion that may conflict with that second.
I think this would be confusing. It won't conflict as he designed this, these two to go together.
Okay, so.
But it would be confusing because.
So we voted for zip one to move the second one forward. Do we need anything else here? Um, just.
This is. Is that a town meeting as well? And this is the, um.
See, I guess I'm looking at that. It could be confusing because it says in anticipation.
It's only for us to set the motion. It's only for us to set the meeting. If that meeting, will the numbers be paired correctly?
By then we'll have that.
Maybe referencing a rant or something, because I'm not sure people would understand with that.
In the explanatory text, we'll make sure we clearly explain all of it. That's my next challenge.
Okay. It's a little confusing the way it's.
Everything's.
Well, that's true.
We've been living this.
That's true.
Yeah, I move to adopt the resolution authorizing appropriation of six. Million one hundred seventy five thousand for the installation replacement and or upgrading of the HVAC system. And indoor air quality improvements at Forest Quarter School and the financing of said appropriation. By the issuance of general obligation bonds and notes. In anticipation of such bonds being in an amount not to exceed. Three million three hundred ninety six thousand two hundred fifty dollars, calling for a special town meeting, establishing a date for referendum. Authorizing preparation of explanatory text. Yeah.
You got it.
Although, yeah, the words that. Literally died by. All those in favor? Alright, pose of extension. Discussion.
Okay, so nice question, so what support you need from each back committee against town meeting? I'm sorry for being there, but I mean, are you wanting us to present similar to we did that tri board and. We can with the numbers or what what would you like the HVAC committee to do?
Well, can I, I'm gonna have to work with you on that.
Sure.
Shine your armor.
Can I ask, can I? Please, Ken, how long will it take now that this is approved and going forward by Boris Sleckman, I really need to. Nail down, explain to our tax so we can get something in the mail. And have people understand why we're having a town meeting and what. Questions they might have. Where do you think uh we'll be on that?
Um I really wasn't uh anticipating to have to address that, but um I I'm sure that we can right get right on it. And uh give you the support that you need.
Okay, good, yeah, because I talked about. At the tri board meeting. And I told, based on successful moving forward at this meeting, that'll be my next focus, so.
Right, and I and I will relay the message, you know, first thing in the morning and then we'll effectively be on the clock.
Great, and I think a key explanation in the explanatory text is why you're doing this and what's the difference between HVAC and the DOAS and. What this solution does for the school and how it works, because it's it's, we've been talking about a long time and it's confusing. It's it's a tough.
Absolutely. It's state of the art as well, so it. Um you know, there a lot, a lot of thought goes into it.
All this did was move this forward, townspeople moved aside, correct analysis.
This is moving it forward to a town meeting that will automatically roll to a referendum.
Oh, are you setting a town meeting tonight? And so would you say that if I didn't?
If that's in this law resolution.
I think it's thirty, right?
I didn't hear it.
I didn't do it, I didn't say anything.
It's not.
You, okay, you adopted. This second. Resolution.
Your motion should include a date, so they're solid enough.
Okay, let me make a second. So here it is. And. In your motion, you include this whole regulation with number two, three, four. Of which. There is the. December twelfth. That's a, hold on, if we back up. Further resolved, the board hereby calls special town meetings for the town to be held on third, December thirtieth at Yeoman's Hall. Connecticut six thirty P M, submit for one resolution for a project, the electors and citizens and eligible to vote. And then we'll all do that.
Yeah, it's not going to be clear in the minutes, it has to all be in the minutes or um. Grabbing a pissy shade, oh, granted.
You want it?
I mean, it's clear in the minutes. That you're actually, that's my emotion, but I guess.
Well, Steve will be signing tonight if if you want to read it.
No, really?
I know.
How many the timeline here in terms of somebody in the state?
Uh we have to submit it to the state by December thirty first for the grant.
Okay.
So the referendum is December twelfth. And the town meeting is November thirty.
Now with the submission, we're going to have uh letters of support submitted with it.
Yes, that's my next request tomorrow. Work on that.
So what do I have to need to do, have to read this whole thing?
Well, you're going. I I'd say as presented and you're gonna sign it tonight and it'll be in the minutes.
Just make sure the members have the date and time of this, the referendum, the town meeting.
Okay, I'll amend my, can I amend my motion already, or are we? Okay, I I move to. Uh great. I I moved to schedule the town meetings. On. November thirtieth, twenty twenty three, Yeoman's Hall, at six thirty P M. For the. Town meeting to discuss the previous resolution. And then um resolution for the project. Okay, resolution for the project. That's for the pro for the HVAC project for Horace Porter School. My further then, I further resolve that. Pursuant to section two point five alpha of the town charter after discussion, at the special town meeting. The resolution shall be submitted to qualified voters as referentory, yes or no vote utilizing voting technology. Or methodology approved by the Connecticut Secretary of State. On Tuesday, December twelfth, twenty twenty three, during the hours of twelve noon to eight P M, Yeoman's Hall. Three twenty three, Route eighty seven, Columbia, Connecticut, in demand provided by the town charter and the and Connecticut general statutes. And at the town clerk, be directed to post and publish notice of such referendum in accordance with the provisions of the town charter and the Connecticut general statutes. Which notice shall state the question to be voted on as follows. Shall the resolution title resolution authorizing appropriation of six point one seven five. Six million one hundred seventy five thousand dollars for the installation replacement and or upgrading of the HVAC system. And the indoor air quality improvements at the Horace W Porter School and the financing of said appropriation by the. Insurance of general obligation bonds and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed. Three million three hundred ninety six thousand two hundred fifty dollars be approved, yes, no, except for just. Pause, I if we just said we were gonna finalize these numbers, now you have.
Well, those numbers. Those numbers work. They they will work in this one. For the town meeting, we get down to the exact numbers that the state will give us, we can have that available.
This is all pending bids and everything.
Right, so after the practice, bring the label, the ballot label?
No.
Any discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Those against, opposed. Good dedication of the annual report. Think of it. Get back to us.
Why don't we need to put your deadline for that?
Uh now.
As soon as possible. Waiting on a a couple of things to find line.
What do you think the honor will be?
Uh go ahead.
Okay, so this annual report might not be, yes. Normally I wait for the honor to come in to write my, my, with my nature.
How long is Ernest Sharp and serve in the town?
He would be great, I was gonna say. It's been what, twenty two years?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we put Ernest Sharp as uh dedication uh subject for the annual report this year.
They get to great.
In discussion.
It won't be a surprise.
All right, put your finger in your ears, all those in favor. Opposed, and you don't get a vote. Thank you, that was the easiest thing tonight. Twenty four, twenty five holiday schedule, I move to approve the twenty four, twenty five holiday schedule as presented. Oh, another holiday schedule. Trying to be easier, never mind. What I just. I don't have it, I have you there, he is a. I don't know, yeah. Fourteen, because we do New Year's Day on the twenty, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Please, Lisa, don't go over.
Oh, this is true, there's two New Year's days.
Yeah, yeah, it always does, we always do that, okay? Same as last year, right, Mark?
Yes, sir.
Can you sneak one in on me?
No?
Home state still comes there? I don't think the names are, you just look at the dates. All those, any discussion, I make a motion, we approve this, I did, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Next of state. We need to stay with that. I move you approve the twenty four, twenty five board of selectmen meeting schedule as presented. January second, really?
Well, that is an obvious one, you might want to move to the following.
I think September third.
Okay, hold on, right, let's go month by month because, uh we want to move January second or do we need? We're gonna need, it's gonna be starting the budget season.
Yeah.
So do you want to move it to the two and seven, ninth?
Ninth, yeah.
Okay. That's what I think you might need to do.
Okay, February sixth, twenty, make sure you're correct. Then it's Tuesdays, right? You're putting this together, I'm I'm not, we'll double check, I'm sure you did, but.
The other one that considers July seventh.
Okay, let me, March, 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 I have a lot of grandkids now, I gotta see their birthdays. Hey, Bill, I'm, congratulations, guys. Oh, oh, it's a wonderful, wonderful pictures of you and your new granddaughter, son, son.
Here, thank you for yesterday.
Oh, wow.
Thank Felix. And my wife, and she was named after her father Felix, so we're very excited.
Very good.
Do they love character?
Oh, there's always five in school. I'm teasing him. April, May, 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 June. Yeah, July second, what did you say?
You might want to move that.
Yeah, July second, um.
I'm okay with that, but.
You might want to look at October. Chris, looks like October second and sixteenth is a Wednesday.
So Chris, July second, what's your thoughts?
Oh, I'm sorry. I can support.
Either way, I'm indifferent. I don't care.
I would love to say I'll be on vacation, but I don't.
All right, July sixth, we can always cancel it. Um August.
But July se, if it's a Tuesday, it'd be the ninth, right? July ninth.
We're not.
Uh yeah, July second is a Tuesday.
Yeah, it should be.
Right, so we're gonna do the next week, it's the ninth.
I know, we're not leaving actually, we're leaving at the second.
Oh, okay.
September three seventeen, I'll be on vacation. I got a, I have a very capable deputy. They can take care of, October, what, now, October, what?
On zero six, October second is a Wednesday or Wednesdays.
You're right, so it's October first.
October first.
We would have caught that, we double checked everything.
November twelfth, because uh. Election day is the fifth.
Right.
Okay.
That works.
All right. Uh December third, seventeen. Okay, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
And January seven, fourteen. First, first is the holiday, so would be. Yeah, all right. Although. We want seven twenty one.
Um actu- actually, the seven is the first Tuesday of January, okay, so.
Then that will be seven twenty one, right?
Yes.
Hang on, thirteen.
Correct, seven twenty one. I think you stressed that one.
Uh all these days work for people?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna amend it, I move to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five board of selectmen meeting schedule as amended. All those in favor? Opposed?
I understand.
Call me late. Wait, wait, oh, we added Minnesota. Okay, go ahead, Tom. Okay, so Bill Lindsay is the um. Uh and his company Minnesota, he's the financial advisor, uh he handled all my bond releases in his town, great guy. Really knows his stuff, he already jumped on and got us our bond scheduled today, it was very short notice. But I'd like you to authorize. Us to go into a direct within to handle the bond. And he would actually take it out to the public and sell the bond. Even though that is, okay, so it's Bill Lindsay of Minnesota as a municipal financial advisor.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to allow Martin Walter, our administrator, to. To enter into an agreement with Minnesota Company, a municipal financial advisory service. For the bond council. For to be our, not a bond counsel, but he'd be our municipal advisor for for bond, for the settlement or initial, okay? All those who are in favor, discussion, public favor.
Plus, there's no cost until we actually do it, right?
Right, there's no cost unless we actually buy.
Okay, this isn't something that we have to find out for a better reason.
Well, there aren't that many people that do this and I I might. In total trust of Bill.
Just ask him a question.
It'd be up to you, the board.
Is there a difference, do other. Uh people charge less money or?
His costs are in line with what I've experienced, which is under a hundred thousand for initially buying. And I I'm just saying, he's he's really good.
You've worked with him before.
Right, okay, Mark, if if somebody questions and pass on the step, pass, we'll go.
It does. I I only know that he was my advisor against that.
So earlier this year, we voted on, what's it, bond counsel or not?
Right, bond counsel is legal representation for actually writing the bond resolutions, making sure the whole process goes. Legally towards bonding, this is someone who actually prepares to sell the bonds and to. Work with the markets in the actual. You you'd sell it in the open market.
So he's gonna kind of.
He would.
Like a broker, trying to find the right bond for us. Is that kind of thing?
He would.
He's finding the investors that are.
He would handle the going public with the bond. And selling the bond. And establishing what a rate we get. And advising us.
Is there a delay in time to worry just? Going competition, just for safety, is that impact dark on you?
None.
Uh I'm really drawing my own question, but just, you know, I've worked at a couple of different bond companies, I I don't. The fact that it's been brought up at the meeting and the fact I made a comment that I did, um I don't want to call it into question, okay, okay? I have faith in you, I have faith in you fully recommend, I just need to make sure you don't get yourself pulled into. All right, I watch too many. Law shows, it's great, um all right. Application to replace a concrete dock. Uh I move to approve the application to initiate demolition phase for the removal of concrete dock and footing utilizing demolition plant. And adding a floating raft in one forty six Route eighty seven, common recommendation set forth by. So let's take a look, I know this dock, it has to be broken down, there's a big crack in the center of it, it's heaved up. So it's gotta be taken away as long as no um. No motorized is on the night minute and seems like no matter. That the community approved to initiate the demolition phase.
How long did the dock, how long did they last?
I have no idea.
Let me say, just curious.
It's more, it's a new witness. Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? I abstain. I've been on this house and I'm a little upset. Able to business, I don't want to make it, you know. He got it, that was true, but I just. Anything else? For that, and that's good. Uh appointments resignations, appointment of Savannah Sharp as an assistant animal control officer. I move to appoint Savannah Sharp as the assistant animal control officer. All right, discussion, control officer to who? All right, discussion, control officers to who? Assistant animal control to. And we entered into a new agreement?
No. So we're still working with East Adams Animal Control. Okay, she's actually an officer of East County, East Hampton, that is servicing Columbia.
Okay, so as long as they, we are in in agreement with them and they service this area, we will. Uh, we're going to allow her to be able to do her job, right, okay?
So is this a new job, or somebody left, or?
Somebody left, and she's replacing.
She's replacing.
Okay.
Said additional, keep them well, um, staffed.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye, yes. The next town administration for.
All right, I am closed, we've been working with Connecticut D O T, and. Two resolutions have come back, one is that they are revising the passing zone on Route sixty-six. Uh, right by Ripford Road, so they're, because Ripford Road comes out there, they're they're uh removing the two-way passing zone. Uh. And it's a little confusing, because then I talked about we only the eastbound passage zone, but I I think it all depends on how many feet. And where exactly it is, so.
Well, the westbound doesn't really start till after Wednesday.
Right.
Maybe it's also uphill, I'm not even sure it hasn't happened yet.
Well, if you're behind a big old fat truck doing twenty miles, now I try to get up that hill. Which I've been behind, you know, makes it easier.
Well, the final conclusion is for the above reasons, it is recommended that eastbound only, and the two-way passing zone be removed. And the westbound only passing zone be revised as specified, so. That's what they're doing. And then the next one, they disagreed with changing the forty-five nine hour speed limit on Route sixty-six. Um, out near the window town line, because they felt to lower it. Would be an unrealistic speed and would actually cause more danger by having a speed that no one. Believes is correct, because it's too low, they said. And I can read this, establishing a speed limit, primary goal is to achieve one that will be realistic, comfortable, and respected by the drivers. They felt if you lowered it, that will not be the case.
There is no speed limit. Anywhere in the state that is respected by the drivers.
They try, they try.
I see, I guess, just try to run out of Louisiana, they're going eighty-five miles an hour. If you don't get out of the way, you're just gonna be blown off the island.
Yeah, it was kind of. Okay, all right, we're young ones, all right. Um. Oh, also, I just wonder, I think they've got, I don't know, but we're having a holiday party? It was somewhere. In the chair first?
Yes, in the afternoon.
Oh, yeah, there it is. So, holiday party, you're all invited to Lock Cabin on December first at four o'clock. And make a good time, we're planning to come and have a great first order of food. And officer, they're doing doing first drink on a new election.
I think it's first victory, son.
Yeah, square bottle.
Either way, winning.
Also, you all have in your packets, you have the draft zoning regulation amendments that Zoney couldn't be looking at. To um modify the neighborhood retirement housing regs that we have. To include affordable house. And retain some design and neighborhood context involved.
Where is this?
Well, if you don't have it anywhere, I'll give you some.
I only have as a picture of two people on one part.
But I wasn't sure.
I thought that was fun.
That was great.
Took work into my archives at Eastern.
Oh, it's before the holiday party.
Okay. Jan is right. Okay, so if you could give these a review, if you have any feedback, uh, provide them to myself or Nasa. They'll be addressing this in their next, maybe so, a week.
Uh, some correspondence in there, take a look at it. Nice Friday for election day, and how the races were so close.
No, Paul has said that he's leaving.
What?
He's he's got promoted, he's not gonna be our reporter.
I haven't seen him in a while, yeah.
He's, what did he say? Norwich, or New London, he's got promoted to. So we're gonna get some.
Chronicle covered in London?
No, he's got promoted to a different newspaper.
Oh, a different.
Yeah.
So what did somebody do?
No transfer, I move to approve the refunds totaling two thousand seven hundred thirty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. And nothing I'd be looking at, any discussion? All those in favor with refunds?
Aye.
Opposed? Centuries, so. Paying the bills. All right, I will pay, uh, bills totaling hundred ninety-five thousand eighty-six dollars and thirteen cents. Consisting of twenty-three point four emergency, twenty-two point four regular credit card and paycheck. You detailed my car?
It was the.
Could have had a, could have had a fundraiser, you know, the fingers doing the car launch.
You might have seen.
How's the W P W? Didn't see a lot of the stuff on here for them, we all sit down and we're doing them.
Well, they all want their furniture, right? Yeah, we're we're just, we're finalizing. They'll actually move in when the time clock moves over to that though, then it'll be official. But we just got in.
You know, usually there's a lot of little things.
Well, it's.
Yeah.
The, we just got in the fire alarm and the surveillance came to the yard.
And I wrote song.
Yes, we're ready for winter.
Yeah.
It's gonna come, my chi- my chickens have a. They're gonna hope them, and the cats eating like a crazy person, animals.
We're supposed to have less snow this year.
We'll see.
We'll see.
Because of the. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I get a question on the last page of the, um, I guess, voucher program. The top line desks, director, dispatcher, souvenir center. For four thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars and fifty-six cents on how many desks? What is that?
Those two. And. Well, they were more expensive than our desk we did here because they go up and down.
Okay, I just, my experience had something to do with the desk go up ergonomics.
They go literally up and down.
So like ergonomic where the entire end goes up.
Mechanic. Higher and lower and. Screen. It's automated, I guess.
So much.
The last page before you get to all of the uh voucher with Amazon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We was two eight hundred five thousand dollars.
Yes, and that is in. You put desks, well, everything you go use the desk.
You've been on the media.
We got wind, wind screens for the tennis courts.
Yeah, they haven't installed it. At the same time. Their privacy screen.
Wind screen.
Yeah, because it's just you're playing a little football. Yeah, that's right, basketball.
Never mind, I got it.
Yeah, wind is not kind of.
No, I'm like tennis ball, I'm thinking tennis.
Audience is citizen.
I don't think we voted. Paying the bills.
All those in favor? Oh, you know, I could interrupt. You signed off on the reading, I know. Did you ever say? All right, thank you, fine shift, we good?
Yes.
We're fine.
Now, I'm a citizen.
Now, audience is citizen, Michael Lester, how are you? You just didn't check in on us? I just came with a case of questions about uh burning the brush pile. What about the burning of brush pile? Being older, yeah, I know, um. Okay, how do we do, lesson learned on that thing, or what?
What happened?
Well, I'm not getting you, I'm not pouring you under the fire here, it just, I get it, it it probably was, uh. Please explain to the board, yeah, okay, well.
Each time we burn the brush pile, the last several times it didn't go well because the pile was not. Removed, so the new brush pile was just put on top of the old, and when the pile gets put in, dirt gets pushed in and. It just, the last pile that got burned, it just moved back to the yard for.
Oh.
So there was, there was a few complaints, so I figured I should come tonight in case there was. But we have the, and I worked the market that we're gonna do it again if it happens.
All right, so there's a lesson learned there, right? Okay, so the bottom line is you work with the Department of Public Works Director, we'll figure it out, and we'll go better next time. All right, thank you for coming in and and being available to uh address it, because it it's moldered for. A week, and we've got a few phone calls.
Yep.
Um, so I appreciate you coming, thank you. Uh, anybody else? Anybody online?
No, sir.
Okay, board member comments? Yeah, okay, so the school thing. In in thirty-five years that I've lived in town, probably on my hand, I could talk about things that are probably contested in this town. And most of them come from the school. Um.
Right, the town.
You know, the bottom line is, town will, the town will vote, so. Good. Uh, no executive section, so at this point in time, I move to adjourn, all those in favor?